Thirty. So, welcome everyone. This is our Human Resources Personnel Changes. It is September 22nd, 2022, 11:00 a.m. In attendance are Commissioners Brooks and Duncan. Commissioner Philios is on the phone. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll go ahead with the item number one, request for 2023 summer intern, public defender. Hi. You can just have a seat and then push the little button so your mic is on. Thank you.
Good morning. Jeanne Howe, on behalf of the Public Defender's Office. Pursuant to the memorandum that was submitted back on September 16th, we are making a budget neutral request for a second temporary intern position. That intern position would be for 30 hours per week, and it would be for the time period between mid-May and mid-August of 2023. It would be at the current pay rate. So again, this would be a budget-neutral request. We're asking for that at this time, so we have lead time to hire an appropriate person for the position. Thank you.
All right. So essentially, is it kind of one position being occupied by two people at two different times?
Correct. There is a current position, but that person who is slotted for it won't be using the authorized amount of time.
Gotcha. Okay. Any questions, Bill?
No, I have none.
Chris?
No, I'm fine.
All right. I would entertain-
You want me to make a motion?
Either you or Bill.
Okay, so I'll make a- okay, I'll make a motion with regard to the public defender request for a 2023 summer intern, that we approve the request as made by our public defender, Ann Taylor.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. And next is item two, request for approval of MOU with Shoshone County. And this is Prosecutor Barry McHugh and prosecutor coming in, Stan Mortenson. Go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is Barry McHugh. We've been talking with Shoshone County Prosecuting Attorney Ben Allen and sort of commiserating on our challenges in hiring people. And so, we talked about the idea of basically joining funding sources in order to try to attract a candidate that would be willing to take a position that would be split on a 60/40 sort of timeframe, with 60% of the time working here in Cootney County and 40% in Shoshone County. The memorandum of understanding is the- it's not finalized, and I'm not asking for anything to be approved today, so much as I just wanted to present the idea, since we have been talking about it, obviously, we've been putting some work into it, to answer any questions or concerns that the board may have. It would be a situation similar to the MOU with the Attorney General's Office, where the individual hired would be a Cootney County employee, but a part of salary, a part of the funding for the position, would be paid by Shoshone County on a regular basis. And the idea being that, you know, we'll be able to, if this works out, we find somebody that we like, utilize one of our open AT positions, add some funding from Shoshone County, and get a really qualified, hopefully felony prosecutor who can handle things in our county as well as in Shoshone County. And then, obviously, you know, depending on trial calendar, and, you know, we have a tentative schedule, but that would be flexible depending on trials, you know, hearings in one place or the other. And we just- the idea is that we would just be flexible on a week-to-week basis in terms of where those hours get spent. So, we're trying to leverage the money we have and meet the needs of the current market. We've had- we've had two positions advertised for a couple of weeks now and have received, well, one applicant, but he's not even licensed. So, it's been- the market is still very challenging, and we're hoping to use this as a way to attract a qualified candidate.
Okay. Any questions, Bill?
No questions.
Chris? Any questions?
No, I think it makes good sense.
Okay. All right. So I guess when you're ready for approval, just bring it back, or I think Mr. Mortenson will be bringing it back before us, so.
That's probably correct.
All right. And I think this is your last HR meeting as well.
Yes, it is. And I'm not asking for anything, so, you know, there's something.
Yay. Thank you for leaving us with a positive note.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Item number three, request for extension of variance pay cases-
Are we going to vote on that, or?
No. No, he'll bring it back when it's ready to be signed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yep. And so, item three, request for extension of variance pay, KCSO 911, Lieutenant Higgins.
Lieutenant Higgins, for the record, back in June, the board approved the variance for a exempt employee to cover some overtime shifts. That was to expire at the end of the fiscal year. I'm asking to extend that through the rest of the calendar year, through the end of December. She is still a valuable asset. We still have a need for her. In December, we'll reassess where we're at staffing-wise and vacancy-wise, and determine if we're going to continue that or request that through maybe end of the spring, but right now, I think the end of the year is a good spot to stop. I ran it by Brandy, and Brandy did the numbers, and it's budget-neutral. We'll use salary savings to cover the cost for that.
Okay. Any questions? Chris?
So, yeah, I've got a question. So, she essentially, refresh my memory, Lieutenant Higgins, is she basically filling in for a vacancy that still exists?
Yeah, she's filling in for vacancies that still exist to give some reprieve for those that are working six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 12 days in a row.
Got it. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Motion?
I move that we approve the request for extension of the variance pay for KCSO 911.
I'll second it.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes, and we'll just clarify, that's to the end of this calendar year. Thank you. All right.
See, when somebody's on the phone, you can't nudge them, and they can't nudge.
Right. Item number four, request for new jail sergeant position, restructuring of supervision. And this will be Lieutenants Ellis and Hutchison.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is something we identified a need for several months back. Given the priorities in the '23 budget cycle, we didn't feel it was appropriate to ask for an additional position and additional funds, as well as with our current situation, with some changes the new sheriff brought on, the current job market, and changes we experienced through COVID, we still identify a strong need for this position. To counter the funding component, we suggested dissolving two separate civilian positions and allocating those funds towards one new detention sergeant. We worked with Brandy Falcon. She calculated in '23, a cost savings of just over $6,000 should be implemented, and in '24, potential cost savings of $12,000, depending on the certification level of the employee brought on, the savings could be slightly greater.
Okay. And then, is post paying us for this sergeant's position?
I do not believe there's any reimbursement for the position out of post. There is a lieutenant position that is funded through the Post Academy.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I don't see a problem with this. Chris, questions?
Yeah, just one. Briefly describe what you mean by the restructuring of the supervision.
So, we're working on getting a North Idaho Detention Academy up and running. The person who previously filled the position has been sent to the academy to get that going, and to supervise both patrol and detention academies, along with lieutenant that's out there being funded by NIC. We see just extreme value in getting this North Idaho Academy going for detention. We believe that the sergeant signed out there is necessary and will pay off in dividends down the road, but we also need to backfill what that sergeant was currently doing within the jail.
Okay. I'm good.
All right. Motion?
Thank you.
I move that we approve the request for new jail sergeant position in line with the restructuring and supervision at KCSO Jail.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Item number five, I think we need an executive session, so I would ask that maybe we handle you near the end, so we can just go in once. Okay? And Ben is shaking his head in affirmative, Chris. So, then I would ask, do we need an executive session for item six? Is that?
Probably not.
Okay.
Probably not, as long as we're not talking about the employee's performance or anything.
Okay. All right. Then we'll go ahead and handle item six, request for compression increase with resource management office. And Sylvia, is this you, or is it Jody?
Jody will start, and then I can give you some additional information.
Okay.
Okay. We're requesting the program manager's compensation be moved from grade 10, step 6, to grade 10, step 8, to address compression between the program manager and the fleet maintenance manager.
All right. Sylvia?
I'll go ahead and offer some additional information related to that. So, back for fiscal year 2022, we addressed some compression issues, and we set a minimum of 3% difference between their direct reports, the employees and the management. And so, if we move the individual only one step to a seven, to a grade 10, step 7, we would be under that 3% standard we had set. So moving the individual to a 10/8 puts them a little under 5% difference, which is more practical. By doing the 10, step 8, there would not be a compression issue for- between the public transit manager and the senior program manager, because that would still maintain that minimum of the 3% difference in those positions, so.
Okay.
So, I have a- just a quick question.
Mm-hmm.
Because sometimes I can't necessarily relate to the levels. The program manager is the individual that has recently been hired. Is that correct?
Incorrect. That is not correct.
Go ahead.
It's the person that's been- it's the program manager has been in position with the county since 2018.
Okay. Help me understand this. My understa- okay, initially, when this discussion began, there was a question of two compressions.
This, Chris, this one is- This one has been identified as one needing addressing. The other two positions brought for us did not qualify. So this is just one person who's been here since, I think Jody just said, 2018, and then a new hire on brought them with only, I think, $600 of the long-term employee. And so, increasing this two steps would fall within policy.
Okay. I'm fine. I'm fine. That was my concern. I had it figured a little bit differently, because I understood it differently, I guess, when it first emerged. But yes, I understand that we try to stay beyond this, outside the three, a minimum of a 3% spread, so I'm okay.
Okay. Bill?
I'm fine. I move that we approve the request for compression increase for our MO.
Okay. Do we need a step mentioned to step 8?
Is it in the MO?
I think it- no, might not be.
On the projection, it has both of them on there.
Okay.
We just need you to indicate it's the grade 10, step 8.
Yep. Grade 10, step 8, second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye.
And clarification, this is grant funding. This is no general fund. It will not impact the budget for general fund dollars.
The budget.
Yep. All right. Motion passes. Item seven, Parks and Waterways Reduction in Force. And Mr. Snyder, did you want to speak to this, or just let HR speak to it?
All that HR has agreed. Is there a second?
Yeah, but I don't think we need one at this point. All forms have been signed and all Ts crossed.
So based on direction given to us a couple of weeks ago by the board, we have went ahead and discussed the situation with the employee. They have signed off on all necessary documents, and so this would be to ratify the direction of the board to move forward with reduction in force, effective 10/1. 10/1?
Yeah.
10/1.
9:30 is his last day.
Last day is 9:30 of '22.
Okay. Effective 10/1. Okay. Chris, questions? Bill, questions?
No.
I don't have any.
Okay.
I move that we approve the request for reduction in force by Parks and Waterways.
Okay. Effective October 1st, second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Item eight, request for approval of pay changes and reclassifications related to the FY23 budget. Sylvia?
Yes. During fiscal year '23 requests and approvals of the budget, we're presenting to you a couple of different situations that we need approval from the board. One is when we brought forward the employee pay changes for the 9/6 approval. Of course, we're moving people around, we're hiring new people, so we needed to add, the first section of this report, is to add any new hires, transfers, promotions, or any approved pay changes that have occurred from that date, so that you approve each employee's pay. The second component of the document we've provided to you deals with adopting the changes approved with the fiscal year '23 budget, and that encompasses position conversions, reclassifications, any reorganizations that resulted in reclassifications, and some budgeted step adjustments. So we are requesting formal approval from the board of the changes presented on the worksheet. There are some various effective dates, and they are noted on the document. And so, I'm requesting board's approval, just to follow this through. I think you remember this spreadsheet with all the position changes.
Yep. Yep. Any questions?
No.
All right. Chris, questions?
No, I'm looking at it now. How many, Sylvia, in total, how many are affected? How many positions? Is it everyone?
No. No, not all employees were affected by this. For fiscal year '23 changes, there are, I'm going to have to count them, so give me a moment. Fifty-six? Yes, thank you. About 56 changes, but they are budgeted.
Okay.
They are budgeted.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I'm fine.
Okay.
I move that we approve the request for approval of pay changes and reclassification related to FY23 budget for HR.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. So we're going to go back to item five, and we'll handle item nine as well. And is there a motion? Well, no, item five is the request to transfer between departments outside Policy 120, and then the other one is just an executive session, so I would entertain a motion.
I move that we enter into executive session.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair Pro Tem Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye.
All right. And so, clarification, it's 206-1B is our statute. And Chris, we are going to be calling you back, because we'll be ending the conference call.
Okay, great. Appreciate it.
Sure. Sure.